20,000 to 2,000,000 dollars in the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, your stuff on the way? The claims.
So we had claims in the amount of $255,864.78.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? What do you have on this change order? Anything? Part speak to it or Steve?
Well, yeah. I printed out this sheet that he sent an email. John, the inspection engineer. Yeah, and he said we're $67,049.97 under the original bid amount. So it's confusing as to why they would send a change order for $105,000 some dollars. That's all I can tell him. Steve, did you come up with any further analysis? Approved change order?
The whole line is we don't owe it.
Even though the back page here shows the $6,5791, has approved change order 105950, final 5938741, and still under $67,049. I don't see how or why we would owe it.
There's nothing assigned or anything other than...
There's no motion, so we don't know.
Thanks for table on that last week, by the way. Or like two weeks ago. See what you're doing?
So their explanation is just that we're under, so here's our change order?
Basically.
We never got an email about it.
I mean, you would think they'd have some kind of itemized building would give us the sense of what we're paying for.
Yeah, what are you looking at?
I'm just looking at the log here for this, but I was just commenting on what you guys had said.
Yeah, Johnson, this summary on the last page that goes across and shows that change order in there.
I didn't get that one.
Well, if that change order's thrown in there, we're still under budget.
We still don't have an explanation for why it was $105,000.
Well, with paying the change order, we're still under budget, is that what the deal is?
But our specific question was, how could it be that much?
But it was bid $6,5791.
Just because we're under budget, they're not necessarily...
It still shows here that it said the original contract amount is $6,5791.33. Modified contract amount is $6,111,742.25.
Which is the total of that change order, right?
Which is the total of that change order.
But what we asked them for is explanation on what the change order was, and they haven't responded to that.
But they're requiring a signature. I'm assuming for me, and I'm not coming to sign it until we figure out what we're doing there.
So you had a final amount, you had a final amount above what I have on this, or John has on this?
You can read it if you want.
Oh, there's still a final walkthrough to figure out.
I wouldn't pay them totally if they were more than full. But they ought to be able to show you what the cost is attributed to, more so than just saying a change order.
So they're adding that $105,950 on top of $6,500,000 to get that $6,101,000. Where John has a summary showing that they're under $6,700,000. So there's still issues here. Well, how should we proceed? Somebody needs to explain this to us from...
Well, I would assume if they think they're going to get paid under $105,000, they'll contact us.
They'll contact us?
That's probably not the right approach.
Well...
We sent to, we directed somebody to reach out and ask for an explanation of what was involved in the change order.
But did they do that, and then did we get a response?
What's the date on this? This is voluntary.
I'd have been...
I think that's the response, this is the stat.
That's just a breakdown of the whole project here.
Well, doggone it.
And that's from the DOT.
Yeah, this is Indiana Department of Inspection. This is from, well, this is labeled Indiana Department of Inspection Construction Record. I don't know.
So we need somebody from their company to meet with us and explain...
Somebody from our company and their company.
Yep.
So we just need to have them set up a time to meet.
Get that back to, make sure that goes back there.
I can't meet with them this Thursday afternoon or Friday, the following Thursday afternoon or Friday. If you want, meet with them, maybe Parker. Somebody else who's been here through the whole thing might want to be there too.
Walk out the cover of that?
Oh, oh, yeah.
So do we need a motion to arrange a meeting between them or us? Should we just request it?
I could just request.
Oh.
You might, you know, have a motion to have so-and-so represent the town at that meeting or something like that. Just, I mean, we're not going to make official decision, but just to receive information.
Well, Steve, what's your schedule?
I can't do it this Thursday afternoon and next Friday afternoon, but any Thursday afternoon or Friday afternoon, I could do it. And we could work with them or brand new, somebody afterwards, we don't need to...
I could possibly meet this Friday, but...
I mean, I don't need to be there, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, between the three of us or four of us, whoever, I mean, I'm...
Can't have more than two.
Right, but...
Well, I'll just make a motion to represent the town, whichever one's schedule meets their schedule. Because we don't know what they have available. Meet with, or we meet with Indon or we meet with engineer?
I'm thinking...
That was structure point.
What type?
That's who needs to justify the bill, the structure point.
Well, it's not, well, structure point's just the inspection engineer.
That's not...
Well, they designed it, they had an inspection engineer, but boy, or who, it's Foyt's, Foyt's...
Not Foyt's then.
Foyt's, yes, we own Foyt's, the contractor.
Is that that John Langdale?
That's who, he's the inspector.
He's the inspector.
Doug Madely ran the project. He was in charge, I can reach out to him as well.
Whoever's asking for the additional change order is who you need to meet for $106,000 or whatever. But my understanding was that was structure point, but it might be Foyt's, I guess.
Yeah, structure points engineer was working for us, we paid him to inspect the project.
Foyt's contractor. But if it's a change to the original and is additional cost, they need to justify what the cost is because it's a change.
Besides concrete, two-slap's concrete and a hole.
That's not $106,000.
That's not $106,000.
That's not how that works.
So it'd be Foyt's we need to talk to. So representative of town, I move the representative of town, meet the representative of Foyt's as soon as possible. I guess that's my motion.
Second.
All in.
So who's going to contact Foyt's?
I can reach out to Madely in the morning, he ran the project.
Yeah, okay.
And then go from there.
See what he has available amongst all of us, make what else at least please we have.
I'll reach out for his thing and then seeing if it makes him, I'll pass it over.
Okay.
You want to add this?
Yeah, so this is just the ordinance, and I may have overlooked this previously, but you guys had voted, as far as payout accrued holiday time for the police department, that if they went over 216 hours of holiday time, they may qualify for a buyout of that time. That buyout would be requested to their supervising officer and presented to the board. Is the process I set up for that in this ordinance. It's set up for same day, same meeting. You guys had previously directed me to draft this, though. So to qualify, they'd have to be over 216 hours of holiday time, request it to their supervising officer, and then the town could approve it, is how it's set up. So it's not mandatory, but it's allowable.
Well, the whole objective is not, well, we don't allow them to accumulate over that, right? Or do we?
It's not set up to prohibit them from going over it, it allows them to be bought out if they request to be bought out. We really can't mandate a buyout to them. They're entitled to their time if they earn their time.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve, same day, same meeting.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yeah, keep your comp time down and controlled.
It's a good process, but it's just not one that we can mandate. Not legally, anyway.
Sorry, I don't, that'll be you have.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Ian, are you...
Chief's not here, he is home ill. He didn't have anything for him to present, other than numbers from January, which was 10 citations, one felony arrest, five misdemeanor's, seven infractions, two ordinances, 20 warnings, and we had the three cars, worked six crashes, and did two in six.
Do I have any comments? Thank you Ian. Doug?
Well, just in the last couple of weeks, we have jetted Strawberry Road and Britain Street Bus Station to stay on top of IEDM requests, keeping everything up to par. Worked on a storm drain on Mission Street, backed up, got it all cleaned up and blown. We did have on Friday of 1:24, 25, we had a six-inch water main break on East High Street, which was repaired, that was on a Friday, it was repaired, that we had water back on by 5:00 in the evening. Ritz Theater the next day, Saturday, that evening, had a two-inch water main in their basement break, which we went in that night and put a shut-off valve on it and went back in. Next week, we replumbed that back in for them.
So, but just hold up there, we, water main in the basement?
The way it's set up, the water meters in the basement.
Okay.
So we're responsible up to the water.
Up to the meter, and what type of material was it?
It's PVC.
PVC and it broke? Any, any reason?
Froze.
It just froze, okay.
This part of the basement had no heat. A few years ago, we bought them some heated tape and some, a little heater to keep it on, they didn't have it on. Plus they've been closed for renovation.
Right, did it do any damage?
They had to hire a company out of Brazil just to come in and pump the basement. It was hard, but I don't believe there's going to be any requests to pay for that, then it's, they're responsible to keep their basement heated.
About 32, okay.
Yeah, so, so yeah, that's all been taken care of, and they are back on. So we got the pad that was requested out, well, four for the water project, four, we got that four last week, so that is ready for them to come back in, might weld their tass, everything on that. We have gotten brush cut at Briston Road, East Anderson Street, East 36, Valley Drive, behind cars and a right away on Junior Street, it's all being cut and everything, so we're still working on that. We had a C-phase insulator break on East, East 36 on Friday, which requested traffic control right on the hill there. Our guys were able to go in and get that pretty well fixed up. They have built the cross arm that we're going to install east on 36, with electric switches on there, so when the power goes out east with the trees and stuff that we have, it won't kick it off all over town. So we'll be able to eliminate just to the east end of town.
Who built that?
Did what?
Did we build that?
We built that, our guys built that. And we'll have to set a new pole and everything east on 36 and get that set.
About where is that switch located?
It's going to be located just east of Seal Street, right in there. And that way, like I said, what happens on them switches is when a tree falls on it or something, it'll flip them switches up to three different times, hoping to correct the situation. And if not, it'll kick that switch out and not the whole south end of town, so trying to eliminate...
The same thing we have Virginia Hallerly.
Pretty, yeah, pretty much, so it eliminates, makes the outage smaller, easier to find, so they'll be doing that. I did get a text today that our sweeper, it's been completed at the factory, and the company will be receiving some tests and delivering in the next two weeks.
Just in time for spring clean.
So the digger truck, according to Brett, is, they're going to be able to go first of March and put their eyes on it. Make sure that nothing needs to be changed and everything is the way they want it, so they will be going. Brett's hoping they'll move it to Indianapolis where they can see it.
So are the digger truck? What do we do with it?
I assume once we're here to get this one in, R K will put it up for sale. That would be my, there would be no reason for us to...
Right.
Keep that around, so. Like I said, we'll just continue the next few weeks working on still cutting brush, rightaways and all that. The guys have started the Christmas, picking out those snowflakes and other Christmas stuff, and continue just on daily operations. And I, one question I have before we move, oh yeah, move on is, on this market street, before I call tomorrow, is the 7th and 14th is what you guys are wanting? That's Friday, one of those Fridays, or if we can get it done?
Well, 7th this week, I believe David said, next week, well, Steve said either 13th or 14th.
Okay.
Yeah, I can move to the 13th, or Friday to 14th?
Well, I don't want to schedule something then. I don't have any purchases this time around, so, but I do want to let you know that the next meeting, the 17th, I'll have either Tim or Brett represent utilities, I'll be out of town, because we heading home from Yanktonburg. I will not be at the next one, but I'll have somebody here.
Sounds good.
Buy something nice.
Could you serve down?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of them.
Not be up on, one of the things, so is this a new street sweeper, a reconditioned street?
Brand new one.
Brand new?
Didn't we order it two years ago?
Oh, a year ago, a year ago. We, we've had, what, Steve, we've had, you were here, we've had two different sweepers, and both of them were hand-me-downs, and we decided let's, let's just invest one that...
Make a clean sweep of it?
Yeah, make a clean sweep.
We have all the curbs ready. And every day, want to keep them clean. So that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Mike, you got something, boys?
Yeah, I got a quote here from a pair that was trying to get a check valve and gate valve replaced during the vault well number four. Why they've had the pump out and re-liner in the casing. The gate valve inside the vault wound up starting to completely, and the check valve jumped, and water was coming back up, and it froze, it froze quite up against the meter. So we can't keep water off of it, and obviously if you're going to be running out of pumps, once you've done everything operational, it's going to flow right down in the well four anyway. So I'll see if we can get that approved tonight, and the town's going to provide the gate valve, and then the inflages and gaskets for that, but figured that'd be cheaper for us to keep providing, start having them provide that, so. I'll put it over here if you can, I want to take a look at it here. And I think David's got a copy of it, I think, there as well.
So it's peerless, you know, we did a contract with them, $130,000 last year, are they done with all the items on that?
They are getting close. Actually, well, four was the end of that, and then we had to add well eight on it for an additional, for a clean, so that was an additional.
Yeah, I get, you know where I'm going with this, once they get done, it'd be nice, I know that fellow, I can't think remember his name.
Tim.
Tim said he'd come back and give us, we need a summary of this, what we've done. I can't keep track of it, but I know we've done a lot of work out there.
I'm keeping a maintenance log out there, everything is done, so. Basically, well, just we shot it two wells, have them cleaned by the time they're finished out, so. They brought well, or high-service pump number four back Friday. There are, it ran fine when they left, over the weekend, didn't pump, so we got a couple of glitches. So I had Doug reach out to N R K to come and troubleshoot. I'm thinking it has something to do with the new skater panels, that's why I'm hanging this up with him. So let's come one day this week and take a look at that.
So this valve here is just for pump, or for well number four, right? So it's basically a clay valve, automatic valve that's made there?
No, it, well, it's a check valve and a e-valve.
Okay.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in.
One other thing. One pair that was here to hook the well pump up, and there was, if there wasn't any power into the panel box, I had Brett come out and take a look. The breaker was bad, they don't make that breaker anymore, they only make a similar replacement. He threw one in there, but it's...
So just...
I will not disintegrate it back on myself with the way you done it, I'm not going to explain the hell you done.
So what are you saying we need?
Well, I don't know if need to, if you want me to reach out to a couple, couple of electrical contractors, have them come and take a look at it, and see about rebuilding.
Well, this is a breaker box out of well head.
It is, it's a well, and there's five of them, five different panels, so.
Five different panels?
Yes, for a swell.
Well, we've got to have electronics that up the code, so I mean...
They sent Scott down, the three different contractors down in Turghoe to try and locate one, and they said they don't make them anymore. One, I think it was all face, told them you can look on a, through a website.
Go on eBay?
Well, they gave them a website to go on to, and what they do, what that place does is they buy, they hear things are going to be discontinued.
Right.
So it is available on there, so I don't know, you want them to look into that, maybe buy one or two. These panels really should be rebuilt, I mean, they're 20, 22 years old. A lot of that stuff in there is obsolete.
Well?
Curry Risk took the measurements, I believe they sent us a quarter, yeah, like $6,000.
Did they rebuild it?
A new panel. No, did it break?
No, it can't be right.
They're, they're pretty, Brit said it'd be $1,000.
Because I think they said new three figures, like $1,200 bucks. The ones that say are now about $900.
Okay.
So that sounds too hot.
Yeah, I'll look at that quote, send it to you.
That's just for one.
And that, we need five?
Yes.
So that might be where like the $6,000 came in.
Well, get some information on it. One, go see if you can find some breakers, I don't think that's where you want to go. Two, probably just looking to totally rebuild the whole, I almost replacement, not rebuild.
We need their opinion, probably what is the optimal way to approach this, and if we can do that in four months. There might be one, one way to do it.
So something on your do list there?
Yeah, I know. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Bruce, you got anything?
Nope.
Good deal. Well, who's going to discuss the water project, do you mind?
I can, Doug can fill in if, you know, wherever he thinks he needs to jump in. B and S, I think is the name of that electric contract, company was there this morning. So the flooring room is basically done, they put in the lubers and the overhead vent. The only thing left to do in there is the scales, and I talked to John a while back, myself and one or two of the town guys, we can fit those in, but I wasn't ready to put them in until I got those lubers done. As far as I know, the only thing that is left is the louver, or the scales, and a actuator valve. That's the only two things that I can come up with that has not been completed. And I don't know if they've got the program written off, I talked to John Boyd this morning, and he was asking what was left, and he wanted to make sure that electric contractor was out there, but he said he sent it, we're going to send it out and he go to find out what was going on, when Ford might be coming back. All I have, that's all I've, I've been yielding, that's all I know.
You anything to add to that, Doug?
No, that's pretty much all I know. Except, I know when I talked to John, he talked like they would wait till everything was installed, and then put the software together, which he doesn't know why they wait, so, and he was reaching out to see how soon he can get them out there.
You guys, any other old business?
Little bit.
Bring it on.
Yeah, we had a meeting originally scheduled for Friday at 11:00, it's been moved to Wednesday at 11:00 with Westland Engineering, they're calling to kickoff meeting for the I and I project. Doug's where, Bruce is where, I think Doug might be bringing a few other folks who'd be involved in this, from the sewer department. It's here at this room, 11 o'clock, Wednesday.
Is there a reason they booked it for Friday again?
Yeah, they, they, they had a few things going on.
Is that an in-person or is that a team's meeting?
No, it's in-person. Yeah, they, somebody, one of the guys, engineers from Evansville, London Moss funeral was Friday, so. They asked if they could move to Wednesday, and I said, okay. Sorry, Steve, darn it, I can't keep all our schedules straight.
Well, be more patient, hey, I'm sorry, guys.
So that's going on.
I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable, but if somebody else wants to be there, I mean, I don't...
Oh yeah, I'll be there, from the board, I suppose, I, I don't, you know, after this meeting, Doug, I'll probably be stepping away from these, I don't want to be involved. We met a week ago with an engine, no, we met online, team's meeting with their, their GSI guy, and started that process, and Tim, did we ever get subscribed to the site?
I believe we are, and the reason it wouldn't go through is, is we actually do our title with them already. We have a contract with them, that is the main fee for the cemetery.
That's what I read in the email, so yeah, we found out what we're going on.
So that was the, what was so...
What about the, the iPad?
That, yes, Tim reached out to them, we can buy it through them or on our own, which I think we're just going to purchase it on our own, I think it's, Tim said around $1,200. And then, Tim thought we'd go off the phone, hotspot, he recommends actually getting...
Cellular.
Cellular through, on it, but. So the Macintosh tablet that we bought, we'll not carry this, so we, we'll be able to utilize it with other jobs, but we will have to purchase the iPad to take out in the field for this meeting.
So I guess the next thing he needed was the, can't think of his name, remember his name from last week?
Yeah.
Once we get subscribed, and he can go in and start setting up some things.
Yeah, and everything starts setting up, and then like I said, they're going to do the training, which will be Tim and I, and then as we learn it and understand that we're going to train more guys to be able, when they go out in the field, they know exactly what information Tim and I need to go into the program to make sure we can stay up to date, and, you know, we can go in a month later, two months later, and change a manhole that has changed for some reason, we can go in and change that, and keep all that in there for to go back in and look, and so.
Yeah, trying to think what else. I think that's all I have of that, so that got to move. We, Dave and I attended a, oh, we need to sign those papers, board needs to sign those.
Redevelopment, reapportment to redevelopment.
Yeah, we went to that last Tuesday, highlight, I suppose, is the acquisition of the Old National Bank building, where I do, by redevelopment is still on. Hopefully have something done by, that concluded by, by April. So that was good news. Manhole, seemed like there was something else.
So on that GIS, what are you planning on mapping? Manholes, valves?
Right now, we're going to start out with the manholes, but as we learn how to do, we could do water valves, water meters, we, you know, we can buy different programs, so we could eventually have the whole town GIS. Different packages allow us to be within two inches of the water valve.
Yeah, the closer, you know, two, two, two inches, two feet, two, you can go. Closer you get, the more cost, probably.
Yeah.
Uh.
So the everything, we can eventually have everything mapped out.
So there's some future generations who appreciate it, okay?
Oh, yeah, it'd be a good way to inventory what we have and know what, what was done, when it was done. Uh, you know, there's options in there where you can just keep using the same page, create multiple pages and have a history of, well, going back in time. I'm not sure how we wanna, uh, do that.
The people that train the dear folks, professional train the others. What's their experience? I mean, you know, we want the optimal use, and of course, you gotta start with one and develop, but they're, it's not just the mechanics of getting it in, but also how we organize the whole thing and the, and the process. And so their experience in all that is, hmm, what's?
It's, it's Westlers, the engineering company they're training.
Yeah, they can set it up multiple ways how we want it. You know, we're kinda flying blind here. We've never had it. I, I, I guess I feel comfortable, this, this fellow we spoke to online, he, uh, he's been doing it over twenty years. He's been around a while. Uh.
It's just trying to tap into some of that insight about how we.
What works best.
Just like emergency preparedness. I mean, it's nice if your emergency responders know where the, the line switches are for the, the fuses, the line switches, you know, if there's.
Exactly, yeah.
Electric emergency, just knowing, you know, I mean, all the mains are shut off, some kind of priority of what we get put in there first, and it's helping us develop the workflow that needs.
Yeah.
Safety needs as well as.
It seems pretty unlightened, really. As we grow or as we learn what works better for us, you know, all the town sees something different, so.
So, um, yeah, far forget, uh, Stormwater Board meeting Wednesday night, uh, seven o'clock, for anybody that wants something to do. It'll be, it'll be stormy.
Or you want us to come?
No, I, I just throwing it out there. Little, little, uh, um, yeah.
Plug.
Little plug, little plug for the Stormwater Board. Come on, Steve, get up and talk it up.
We appreciate all you do.
Anybody wanna go to solid waste Wednesday?
We're in the, bringing the breakfast, we're in front.
Uh, I don't, we won't have a hot breakfast. It'll be cold, but still. Coffee's hot and, uh, snacks are tasty.
I had on old, old business.
That's it.
For everybody, anybody else have anything, old business wise? Any new business?
Can I jump back to old second? Well, I, I. Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the paving we have left to do and the mess we have on Stark. I'm just curious. I wonder where we're at on, on Milestone's paving schedule.
How many taps of Joe starts?
Yeah, just like, no, we'd love to see him early, uh, as soon as the temperature breaks. That'd be nice.
It's breaking this week.
For a couple of days.
Yeah.
I wish it, yeah. So, okay.
I, I know there's been some complaints up on Anderson, especially right where the new blacktop ends. There was a ditch there and it seems to be sinking.
Okay.
Might take a look at that, and, pretty rough areas, so. Okay, back to new business.
There was some discussion about improved communication with, uh, you know, looking at things, maybe Facebook or whatever media to make improved communication between the town utilities, which is, is great. We got legal counsel. I mean, I would assume it's gonna happen, but just as due diligence, you know, the ownership of that, because I do know organizations where at times it wasn't clear who owned that and who had control, you know, change employees or council members by, you know, natural attrition and all kinds of things. And then it gets to be a mess, because now you've got an established thing that all the public is using, and you've lost the ability to control and be sure that there's accurate information. So I don't know what the legal processes are, but I just know we wanna be sure that, I mean, to me, it's essentially all, ultimately, it's the town council's responsibility on that. And so ultimately, the control needs to start out and always go back to the town council. Anytime anybody ceases to do that, and that, you know, we, we appoint, I mean, you know, we appoint the, Randy or both and, and rules about it. I, that's just my point, because again, it's one thing, it's just, some of the stuff you can't do is critical of the safety and, you know, economics here, and so.
So you're talking about like social media profiles?
Yeah, so for us to, to have a collision, yeah, social media, whatever thing we use, but who's got control of that's put in order?
I can pass, I can draft a resolution on that if you guys want something that just kinda lays out guidance on how that should work.
So, just let me ask, uh, we, Town Rockwell has a Facebook page now?
There's a utility page too, I believe.
Yeah.
Randy has one, and then we asked if there's a way we could get tied into it and post stuff instead of, you know, we know we're gonna have water shut down Thursday. Well, instead of having to go to Randy and Jessica and all them, they're busy, have to say, hey, we're gonna have water shut off, blah, blah, then, then they get phone calls and all that. So what it is, is Tim's got it set up. Tim runs it. Tim's the only one posting on it. So basically, you know, he'll go on there and tell them, you know, we're gonna have water down East High Street, and then he'll go back on, keep updating it, letting people know, you know, we're about an hour and a half away, instead of, hopefully cut down on phone calls to their office, basically. So they can go to that page and see, oh, look, they said they'll have the water back on an hour, power back on in two hours, you know, during a storm. Tim will be posting where we're at and.
Is there a way to tie it into the alerts that go out?
We probably could. Randy, I think, does that, we could probably figure out how to.
So what I just think is we just have a resolution in case the, um, whoever's running that no longer being employed by the town, that don't ensure all passwords, logins and other proprietary information be passed back to the town.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's not a.
I, I think that's what Doc was talking about, anyway, as far as control.
Yeah, that.
And then no, no obscenities or opinions or things of that nature would be posted on there.
And probably whatever passwords they have, whether it's the town council president or somebody, there's co-access to that, to where it's not.
They're all linked to cell phone numbers now, right?
So, yeah, I mean, I can, I, I'll put a social media policy proposal together for you guys.
So, but yeah, I mean, they've gotta figure out the workflow, who's more efficient to get certain stuff done.
Yeah. No, that's, that's straightforward. I can do that.
Anybody else got anything? Any public comment? I did a take.
I'll make a connection with you.
I'll second. Cancel two thousand twenty, Government Festival.
Today's the end of the air.